Okay. So what we do, and this is all defined in the ordinance and in the post plan, and the post stands for Parks, Open Space and Trails Master Plan. That's where we get our marching orders from, that and city council, where the open space advisory committee and the organization that we advise is city council. So our job is to go out, keep our eyes open, find properties that make sense for the open space, to add to the open space, to the Manitou Springs open spaces, and find a way to purchase those properties if they make sense. And currently, we have several properties that are in process. We have the Black Canyon Open Space. We just purchased a piece of property over there for ninety-three thousand, and that's an important piece of property, and it now gives us access to our Black Canyon Open Space that we would not have had if we did not purchase that property. We have the Fields Park Creek Walk, which is a beautiful four hundred foot long piece of property alongside Fountain Creek. We have a piece of property over in Bill Bauer Park, which probably most people haven't heard of, especially over on that side of town, but it'll give us access from the Bill Bauer Park down to Highway twenty-four or thereabouts. Last year, two years ago, I guess, we purchased a piece of property on Serpentine Drive that's giving us access for that whole area, walking from Manitou Springs up to the Rainbow Falls. So we've got a lot of stuff going on here. We have money going out. We probably have fifty thousand dollars going out for maintenance on the Intamin Trail, Iron Mountain, and Red Mountain. We've got a hundred and fifty thousand that's dedicated to the Creek Walk planning. And a number of other smaller pieces. My point in doing this is to give you an idea of how much money we have, and the fact that it's very dynamic, it's coming in and it's going, but we hover around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the amount that we have coming in has been around two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that gives you an idea of where we're at as an entity. And we've been pretty successful with that amount of money coming in. One of the reasons we've been that successful is that we never pay retail for anything. We go begging, or conniving, or we find a way that we can purchase these properties that are at a reasonable value.
Hey, Tim, we have a question from Councilmember Chandler on Zoom.
Judith?
Good evening, everyone. I was just wanting to inquire about roll call, because some of us are attending via Zoom and some of us are not. In order to enact business tonight, you need a quorum, and I was just wondering where roll call would fall in tonight's agenda.
Well, we can do that right about now, I guess. Can we start over there with you, Cheryl? Well?
Cheryl Klein, member.
David Conley, an alternate.
Steve Remner, alternate.
Andrea Sutella, committee member.
Nancy Wilson, vice chair.
Tim Beeson, chair.
Robin Kovat's member.
Thank you, Judy. Judith, I appreciate that.
Thank you, we have quorum, thank you.
Okay, so that maybe gives you a little bit of idea of who we are and what we're doing. We've got maintenance, we've purchased properties, we go out and find properties and negotiate them, along with city staff and city council. The resolution we're going to be talking about here under new business is a resolution that Kendra Ray wrote up and asked for us to put on the OSAC agenda. We did that, we had to wait a month because we only got that just prior to our OSAC meeting, and everything that goes on the agenda has to be published for twenty-four hours. So that's an important thing to remember, too, if you're coming in and talking to us. Ken also requested, expecting a large number of people, which I'm not sure we're going to get that large a number. How many people do we have on Zoom, do you know? Okay, well, a goodly number, certainly far more than we generally have. So we decided to have this as a mixed meeting. We'd, Ken also suggested, requested that he and a few people from the group that probably most of you are involved with, the West End Neighborhood Group, that he and a couple of the people in that group be allowed a large part of that time to discuss matters with the members here in OSAC. We generally don't do that. It just turns into too long of an ordeal when we have a lot of people here, but we'll see how this works out. What we couldn't do, we couldn't just decide that we were going to have a few people from that group up here talk to us for the entire hour. That wouldn't be fair to people that are out there that want to speak, that aren't involved in that group. So what I suggest is that we go through both the speakers on Zoom and the speakers sitting out here, and if you're one of those people that wants to give your time to Ken and his group, then I would suggest that you simply don't speak. And the result of that will be whatever time that we have left over in the sixty minutes we can use for Ken and his two people in that group. What do you call in your group, Ken? Friends of Ruxton Canyon, okay, that's great. So if Ken is representing you, just don't bother speaking on your own, and we'll take up that time with Ken and the Friends of Ruxton Canyon. I need to get the list over here. Why don't we take somebody on the Zoom right now that wants to speak?
Yeah, if you're on Zoom, if you want to issue a comment on this agenda item, just raise your hand so we can keep track. And we will have a three-minute timer going, and it will mute you after three minutes just to give a heads up, unless Tim says otherwise.
That's it? Okay. Yeah, if you're called on and you're not going to speak, just let us know, just raise your hand and say pass or something, so we know what's going on here. Okay. Pardon me? Well, no, you can't, but your name is first, so you are now volunteered. Yeah. You've got your, you've put your addresses on this, but do state your name and address for everybody.
Yes. My name is Jeff Berry. I live at three eighty-six Pilot Knob Avenue, and I guess I need to specify that I'm here as a homeowner in Manitou, and I don't represent any other media organization or news outlet. So I've got, I'll stick to my script, it should run about a hundred and eighty seconds, I'll fall within that three-minute timeline. Hi, OSAC, it's nice to see you all tonight. I believe my home address alone qualifies me to represent an already well-established group called Friends of Ruxton Canyon, but I also think my allegiance to the Friends of Ruxton Canyon has even more to do with the others in the organization with whom I share a distinct community spirit. I'm deeply grateful for the interactions that I have with these people every day in my life here in Manitou, and also for the beautiful surroundings that we all are inspired by here in Manitou. I'm sure that the Open Space Action Committee, I'm hopeful that the Open Space Action Committee is already familiar with the Friends of Ruxton Canyon organization, and if not, we invite you to visit ruxtonfriends.com, the website, to learn more about our shared values. So in recent weeks, the Jenkins family has offered to donate an incredible piece of property to the city of Manitou Springs, albeit with some strings attached. And tonight, the Friends of Ruxton Canyon would like to formally request that the Open Space Advisory Committee pursue the acquisition of this property to further enhance the magical majesty of Manitou Springs for generations to come. Pardon my flowery rhetoric, but it's majestic here, it's kind of magical in Manitou. The parcels in question are identified for you, I printed up some handouts for the committee. The parcels in question are identified in those handouts, and they're further identified in the Parks and Open Space Trails Master Plan, which I understand was ratified in twenty sixteen, ratified and adopted twenty sixteen. The Post Master Plan clearly identifies the Jenkins property in section three-one, which is referenced in your handouts. Also, the committee will see a three-day view of the Jenkins parcels and the various area trails that are in question. These would be magnificent, you know, magnificent parcels of land to complete trails in our community and maintain open space. So hopefully you can refer to these post-plan pages and this three-D view of the Jenkins parcels to get a better understanding of what we're talking about. So my understanding also is that there's currently a ten-year timeline for the post plan, and I'd like to suggest that the Open Space Committee do everything in its power to meet that deadline, to advise whoever needs to be advised that it's in the post plan, and if however the goal is within reach, but the timeline expires, I think it makes sense to provide an extension for the post plan.
We are at three minutes.
Okay. So now I'd like to turn my time over to Kimberly, my neighbor, and Ken, and they can further explain what the Neighborhood Association is up.
We'll walk down through these numbers, and Kimberly happens to be number two.
My name's Kimberly Della Harp, my address is three eight five Pilot Knob Avenue, but also I own another house at thirty Sutherland Road, and so I appreciate the work that you're doing with the Bill Bauer Park, because that's right across from our other house where my mother lives. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk today. Recently, the Jenkins approached city council members with a proposal to donate approximately eighteen acres of land, including a portion of the old Midland Road rail corridor to the city of Manitou Springs. In the letter to the city council that's been published, they cited one of their interests being additional open space and trails connections for residents and visitors, which aligns with the Manitou Springs Park Open Space and Trail Master Plan. While their proposed road and accompanying parking lot are strongly posed by the community, as evident by over six hundred and eighteen Manitou residents across all three wards who signed a petition opposing the creation of a road on the Old Midland Trail corridor and the development of that parking lot, we view this as a potential opening, a door that has been opened, a little crack, that might lead to the future acquisition of that land for the city for open space and trails for current and future generations. Rather than a road cutting through our neighborhood, a parking lot paving over more land, we could have a trail system that seamlessly connects the Intamin Trail with the U-Trail that further connects neighborhoods across Manitou Springs. I personally love the fact that from my house, you know, minus a few roads, I can take my son all the way to grandma's house over in Crystal Hills. We could celebrate the history of Midland railroads and help preserve and protect our natural resources and environment. We're asking you, as the Open Space Advisory Committee, to also view this as a potential opportunity to work towards this vision. I'm happy to share any of this information with you, or, as Jeff mentioned, we do have a website, ruxtonfriends.com, where you can better understand our vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Hello?
There's going to be ample time for questions, I believe, after all the speakers are done, so I would really rather wait until we...
Is that what you want to do?
Yeah. Let's get that done, and then we'll start figuring out how we're going to answer for us to do some talk back. Okay, thank you. Number three is Kendra Ray. Go ahead.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, members, for the Open Space Advisory Committee, for a couple things. One, for the work that you do for our community, very much appreciated. I think a lot of people in Manitou live here because of our open space, our trails, our natural environment, and you all play an important role in making that happen, so thank you. I'm here to talk about a couple things. One is some process about how we can let city council know that you all feel that it's important to potentially pursue the acquisition of the Jenkins and hopefully the Walton properties, and that could be done via this resolution that I drafted and you have in front of you. That's one piece of it. The other thing that I just passed out is kind of a framework, if you will. Assuming that you are supportive of purchasing this, the next question is, how do you go about it? And as some of you know, maybe all of you know, it's a complex issue to purchase open space. You all have been dealing with this, some have been on the committee longer than others, some have dealt with this in other frameworks. And so what I did was to create kind of some headings and some framework, if you will, that I was hoping we might talk about, that we might find out what the most important issues are, and as importantly, how can we, the neighbors, help you? How can we help the city make this happen? You could perhaps do it on your own, in which case, great, go forth, but it's a big project, and my sense is that maybe if we put our collective minds together, we might be able to get this done. And so that's really the nature of this framework, is to figure out what the issues are, how do we divide up the work, where is the expertise that we need to answer the questions we need to address, and then how do we go forward? And so that's really what I, I didn't want to lecture you or talk at you, I really wanted to talk with you, and I really wanted to talk about the issues here, which involve land evaluation, primarily coming up with value of those kinds of things, financial considerations, where's the money going to come from? Tim did a good job of laying out what money you have. The other question is what other opportunities are there out there that we can look at for purchase of these properties? Public input and community needs, obviously a big question is, is this fit with the community needs, and does the public want to do this? It's already been pointed out that this is in the post plan, so that's obvious that the community has already spoken, at least as to the Jenkins property. I submit that the Walton property is just as important, they're adjacent to each other, and that they kind of fit hand in hand. And then there are also other considerations, additional considerations, that should be looked at. So really, that's the gist of it. It is, is this something you all would support? Can we help you? And if so, how do we make this happen? That's it.
Thank you. Okay, who's next on the Zoom? Judith? Judith, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that I'm having all sorts of audio difficulties. I've been kind of kicked out of the meeting two or three times, I'm trying to just get back in, so it looks like I'm back in, and that's really all I wanted to say, is to try to get back into the meeting, I was a little worried about that. So other than that, I have nothing to say at this point regarding any public comment thus far.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And who's next on Zoom? That was it? Well, we're to that place where we're trying to figure out what to do next, and Ken and his two friends in his group had suggested that they come up and have a conversation with the members here. I wonder how everybody else in this group feels about that. It's unusual for us to do that, but I can't see any problem with it. What do you think, Nancy? I think what's going to happen is they're going to come up, they're each going to have a microphone, and we'll have a conversation. Pardon me?
I'm just wondering if we should raise our hands, if we want to say something, and you just want to kind of keep the...
We should probably have a motion that we allow this to continue. What's that? Judith, go ahead and talk.
You know, I didn't even hit speak, so I don't know what's happening on my end, but I do want to just give you a little bit of background with regards to this issue, and that is, on the sixteenth of July, the Jenkins/Norwood presentation was supposed to occur in city council. The Jenkins asked for an executive session, and the council agreed that they were supportive of a public meeting, and there were many residents who wanted to speak, and then the Jenkins pulled out. And so at this point, from a council perspective, the ball is really in the Jenkins court, because we don't have any community engagement meeting scheduled. I don't think it would be a bad idea to schedule one, but there isn't one scheduled. The Jenkins has not let council or the city know if and what its next plan is. They have several options, and really, what our goal is tonight is to look at what the role of OSAC is in this process. The Jenkins could certainly go for a ballot initiative if that was to happen with regards to a road and a parking lot, that would probably not happen until 2025, so there's plenty of time to take a few breaths. And the post plan clearly lays out, and I think your chair can speak to that, as to what OSAC's role is with regards to any parcels of open space that might become available. And right now, there is no kind of there there, because the Jenkins has not, the Jenkins/Norwood has not indicated what their intentions are, if any. So I would treat this as any other potential land acquisition, just like our recent acquisition of the one point zero three acres behind the Baseball Diamond in the URA area, that when open space becomes available, that representatives of OSAC reach out and discuss the potential for purchasing any and all parcels, but right now, we're kind of in limbo. I just wanted you to know that there's no action to take immediately, and I think your post plan really articulates well, maybe you want to put some additional language into it that articulates this area for future open space acquisition. So that is all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thanks, Judy. That's all true. I mean, everything that you're asking for is laid out in the post plan, and very clearly points out what major properties we should consider, and how we should go about considering those. On the other hand, I don't see much of a problem with us having a conversation if that's what the people that are left here want to do. Make a motion.
I will make a motion to allow us to have a public discussion with people during this OSAC meeting.
Okay. All in favor? Raise your hand. David? David, are you voting?
He's an alternate, but they can vote, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. We had seven... Judy did second the motion, do you not have a microphone there?
I said it.
Oh, okay, okay. What do we have, six here? So the motion passed. Now, how do we do this? Ken, did you want to come up with your friends there and take a seat? And is there any way we could, you guys could share a microphone or... Okay. So how much time do we have here before we, at the hour mark? Okay, so we got twenty-five minutes to talk. Excellent. Okay. Why don't we start with Nancy Wilson?
Maybe I can get the conversation rolling. Couple weeks ago, somebody knocked on my door to...
Couple of weeks ago, somebody knocked on my door to sign the petition. I also live on Pilot Knob. We're all there's a few of us here tonight who live on Pilot Knob, actually. And I didn't sign it at that time. And at that time, I was anxious to hear what the Jenkins had to say. It was before the 16th meeting, that kind of thing. And I thought, you know what? I don't know. I don't know the whole picture. And in general, I like to wait and see what the whole picture is before I put my name on something. Well, as Judith just explained, that's kind of blown out of the water now. So maybe I would have signed the petition if I if I knew it was only this. I'll be frank, I'm going to give you my my utmost concern. Would would I personally, as a member of OSAC and a person who lives there, love to have this property? Absolutely. But am I naive enough to think that what happened to 250 homes in mountain shadows or the whole community of Paradise, Colorado, California, happened in a second? Couldn't happen to us up there. I have serious concerns. I read I led crews the last five years before I retired doing rail building wildfire mitigation all over this part of the state. I've seen the devastation of wildfire. I've seen how fast it can happen. And I'm very concerned that we don't have a way out of Ruxton in the event of a fire. And I would love to see us address that. Do I think we need a super highway down the Old Midland Railroad? Absolutely not. But you, some of you may know that that the Intimate Trail used to be a fire access road. That used to be a road that the fire department maintained because they were concerned about wildfire on that southern slope here in Manitou. So when I look at this resolution, I have no objection to it at all. It absolutely is what OSAC has said we do. By the way, in the post plan is also a criteria for how we select open space and agreeably, and a lot of this property does meet that criteria. So I don't have a problem there. But I think one of the things we need to consider is, is there somewhere in all of this a compromise for public safety? Is there something we can do? Does it have to be the Midland Railway Railroad bed? I don't know. Would it be? It doesn't, like I said, maybe it's not a super highway. Maybe it's a two track road that enables more people to get out. I don't know. So I don't want to usurp any discussion Jenkins or anyone else might have with the city regarding safety and that kind of thing. And so that's my my only hesitation about this. There are others, and I'm sure other members can talk about that, like starting with the money.
Yeah, starting with the money.
I'll let go.
Does somebody want to respond? And I think starting with the money would be a good good conversation as well. Dead rough.
So in response to that, my my personal feeling is that, as Kimberly mentioned, the door has been cracked open. This is something that the Jenkins family has expressed an interest in and doing something with this property. And from my my viewpoint, I think we need to explore that. And and in terms of what's done with the property, if by some, you know, manna from heaven, we were to to acquire it for the city of Manitou, I think there would be an amazing community discussion about what's done with it. You know, whether it's what you have mentioned about about fire, a fire break, whether it's a trail, whether it's return to nature, whether there are public gardens, parks. You know, that would be a wonderful discussion that this community can have. And 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 I hope we can get to that. That's my feeling. That's my hope is that the Jenkins have 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 expressed some some degree of a legacy gift, you know, the possibility of a legacy gift. And if that could be, if that could happen, then I think the the community of Manitou could have an incredible conversation as what as to what to do with that property. But but I think what we're all agreed about right at this point is that we don't want to see another parking lot in Ruxton Canyon. And we don't want to see another road bringing more cars into our neighborhood. I think that's a universal. That's a universal concern for almost everybody in Manitou, that the traffic has become unbearable and unsustainable. And so that's my feeling is that I just hope that as an advisory committee, I've dealt with advisory boards myself. And I'm hoping that you can advise the powers to be to pursue this, to do, to explore every option, as Ken has said, to acquire this. And it might not be a sale. It might be, you know, it might be some maneuvering of other things as 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 Ken has alluded to. So I think that's putting the cart before the horse is to say, well, what what are we going to do with it? Let's what are we going to do with this property? That is a community discussion that that needs to be, that everybody needs to be involved in. And I've been, that's been pointed out to me as well, that there are so many people who love this community so much and want to have a voice in how it is, what the stewardship of this community is. And they deserve to have a voice. Everybody who lives in Manitou deserves to have some input in this. And that includes us. So my concern is that there are no more closed door meetings, right? We know who the players are in this. There's the cog, there's the Waltons, and there's the Jenkins family. Those are the three main players that are that are that have the assets here that that are in play. And so we'd like for them to be a part of this discussion. We want to be part of that that discussion that they're having. So that's that's what I'd like to say in response to that is yes, fire is a big concern. And I, you know, I've told my family, my friends, I feel like it's a matter of town, a time before this town goes up in flames. There's problems. So but that's a discussion I think we could have later on about how do we manage this property? So thank you.
Jeff, thank you very much. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I'd just like to talk about the money aspect. I don't think we should get into the money aspect unless we're in the executive session. But the county assessor has assessed that value of that 11 acres, which includes the Midland parcel, just the Midland parcel, is $60,000. Now typically, the county will assess it lower than what the actual market value is. But the next step for us, if we were going to be serious about this, would to pay $5,000 for an assessor to go in there and make an estimate of what's the what the value of that land is. Then Jenkins could come back with his assessor, which would probably be much more than what our assessor would be. But then we could start the conversation. So those are the steps we'd have to take if we wanted to be serious about this.
Yeah, I can almost assure you that the number is not going to be anywhere $60,000. But I think, Ken, you said that Jenkins had come in with $18 million. Is that right?
I would not represent that that number was anything relation. It was a comment made to someone in the audience. She could address it, but I don't think we need to get into that at the moment.
I don't think we do either. Look, I did want to respond to what Jeff said. And what's interesting here is that we don't have any disagreement. That's not quite true. We certainly don't have any disagreement about OSAC needing to get involved with city councils, city staff, and try to find a way to approach Jenkins and see if there is the possibility, if there is a crack there and the possibility of making an offer on that. Or perhaps if Mr. Jenkins is feeling very kind, giving us property. You know, like I said in my opening remarks, we don't generally pay retail prices. We can't. We we end up purchasing a house a year. And we've done a lot better than that. We've done a lot better at that. But I can I can tell you the way these things go. It's a lot of back and forth and a lot of often just a lot of waiting. Because we don't, we don't, we don't have, we don't have any leverage over, say, at Jenkins or or many other people. We're waiting for them to allow the opportunity to exist for us to come in and do that. And we've been pretty successful at that. Certainly, that was the case with the property we just bought over in over in Black Canyon. That went back and forth with the Schuck Corporation for years. And with a lot of work from city staff and and OSAC as well, I think, we got that property purchased. So you know, when you say you want this to be an open process, I understand that. And I I'm I need to think about that. I need to talk with some people about that. Whether we can, whether we would be better off as allowing a few people to have this conversation with Jenkins and then reporting back. It's hard to say how that should go. You know, we were certain, nobody is trying to hide anything from anybody. You people are what makes OSAC possible. You have approved a little piece of the sales tax and a little piece of the property tax. And everybody out there, everybody in this community is what makes OSAC possible. So we have no desire to be sneaky about this. But there are ways of negotiating things that are better than than having community meetings. I'm not saying that's not going to happen. I'm just trying to figure out realistically how this can be done right now. I I think the best person to approach Jenkins at this point is probably our mayor, John Graham. He's got a lot of respect with Jenkins. And whether I'm a fly on the wall in that meeting or somebody else is, doesn't much matter. But we have to think about this realistically and practically. Okay. Judith?
It's Judy, but Thank you. Thank you so much. So much to unpack here. First of all, as a council member and as the liaison to OSAC, I have to be very careful about my role here because I'm just a conduit between council and and OSAC. However, I do want to say that I appreciate everyone who's spoken tonight. And I also want to say that I respectfully disagree with the chair that the mayor is the best person to reach out to the Jenkins. The Norwood slash Jenkins representatives had an opportunity on several occasions to present their pit, sales pitch. They were given an opportunity on the 16th to present. At that time, the residents of Manitou felt like they were going to get an opportunity to speak. But when the Jenkins pulled out, that whole entire agenda was dismissed. It was taken off the agenda, which is unfortunate to me because just because the Jenkins pulled out doesn't mean that council did not want to hear from the residents. And unfortunately, I was out of town during that meeting. So what I would have done differently was just because a developer pulls out doesn't mean we shouldn't hear from the community. And I am a big fan of having a robust community engagement about this discussion. Because the Jenkins has, they neglected to come when they had an opportunity to speak. Now we're kind of in limbo. And yes.
Can we, I appreciate your comments. I think we need to let a couple of other people talk here.
Yes, I I just wanted to say that finish with, I think the best representatives to reach out to the Jenkins is is our OSAC representatives because it is in your post plan. And to to talk to them about land donation. I did email the mayor and tell him that I no longer want donation to be used in conversation because this is not a donation. This is a quid pro quo, something for something. And so as we move forward, donation is not exactly what we are talking about. So I want us to talk about what's really happening here. So yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith? Judy, I'm sorry.
That's how we're getting confused here. It goes on all the time. So I have a couple of things I want to say. First of all, most of you were here on July 16. We did have this very quiet and I thought productive conversation about this project. I thought everybody was just great. And one of the things that did happen at that meeting, if you weren't here, was a gentleman got up and said, I would like to know if if we get this property under any terms, any, what is the possibility of putting in a fire road, an emergency exit road up there for the residents of Pilot Knob and Ruxton? That did happen. And what was fascinating to me is I looked around, everybody in that big group was nodding their heads in agreement. So I think that was, as far as I could see, people were really enthused about that. Not looking for a parking lot, not looking for a fancy road, as he said. But he's, I think he even said, just a two track would probably do it. Get the fire trucks up, get people out. And I don't think that this, even if it went through, there's no reason to consider that some kind of wild thing. It seems to me it's very practical and very smart. And when it's not being used for fire, it's just another two track trail. That's okay. What's wrong with that? And the other thing I want to say is I, we have done property work not waiting for the other side. I think everybody will agree. We've we've pursued people who were, the Rose property is the first one I think of because it was it was so great. He was so cooperative. He really wanted to help Mr. Rose, and it was a pleasure to do it. But it does take us a long time because we're trying not to spend the money frivolously. And we're also trying to make sure that these properties are within our mandate. And we really have to be super careful about that because that's what we're supposed to be doing. We're not supposed to be creating parks. That's the park department. We're supposed to be looking at open space. Our mandate says, does this property, as it was discussed, connect to other places, other trails? Because our mandate is to connect. Our mandate is to make this such a cool place to live. And I don't see why we would have to wait for the Jenkins to say something because we have done before, we have pursued lots that we said this would be super cool. And that's how we do it. And maybe they talk and maybe, as was said, it takes years for us to get these properties. But we eventually do it and we do it at a price we can afford. And I I think I think you're all wonderful. I think this discussion is great. And I think we can move forward. And I don't know if it's OSAC or somebody else, but we have done this before. We have moved forward very quietly. We don't have, we're going to have the Jenkins over for coffee. You all come. It's very, very, and usually it's just one of us. As far as the history I've had with OSAC. Because if you jump on all these people, they think either you're excited and you want it and the price goes up. Or they're just backing off and thinking, what else can I do with this property? And so we we have been very quiet, I think. I think it's a safe thing to say because that works. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Thanks, Judy. We'd like to hear some more from you.
So I, I have a thought. So it's been pointed out to me that this piece of par, this parcel is really two parcels. There's the Midland, the old Midland railway bed on the, the north east side of, of the property. And then further west towards the cog, there's the barn. There's the, the barn and cabins there, which is, my understanding is it's zoned residential. So perhaps, just spitballing here, perhaps those two, those two properties, I know they're owned by the same family. They are considered one property. But perhaps they, it could be divided into. And the trail, the, the, the Midland Trail could be used separately from in a, in a separate fashion than the barn property. Just, just thinking, just throwing it out there. I don't know. Ken, do you have ideas about it?
Yeah. I'd love to hear what other folks on OSAC think about Steve's suggestion about potentially get, he, he made reference, I think, to an appraisal. I think you called it something slightly different. But I'd be curious what you all think about that or what the next steps might be if you think that this is something to pursue.
Yeah.
Hi. So my name's, I also live on Pilot Knob. But I just want to make it very clear that this piece of property or, and those adjacent to them are very much on our radar. And they have been for years and years. And especially once they got kind of shut off, you know, formally or informally to the public. It, it, we are very aware of that, that people want access to that. People want to walk their dogs and, you know, hike and whatever. And so we have, you know, reached out in a variety of ways and have not had a lot of communication. And so I just, and, and we are definitely interested in pursuing this, you know, and, and whatever format that may, may, you know, take.
Thank you. I, I also just wanted to say that when I suggested John was the right person to talk to Chris, it's because he has a relationship with him. Not because we wanted OSAC to step back on this. I think we're, we're all in agreement that we would like to work this process. I really don't see any problem with where we're going on this. It's just going to take a little bit longer than you might think.
Just a, a couple of thoughts. We don't have the power as a body. The power is invested in council. So I was just thinking, for example, what's another way that you buy property? You take out a loan, right? And we did that in order to buy the property on top of Iron Mountain. In fact, we just paid it off last year. But OSAC didn't take out that loan. The city of Manitou Springs took out that loan. So I feel that you want to invest us, with us a lot of power that we don't have. Anything we purchase, anything we have to borrow, anything like that has to be approved by city council. So you might want to think about lobbying there as well. Because ultimately, we can come up with all kinds of stuff and make recommendations and all that kind of thing. But city council doesn't have to do what we say. And they certainly don't have to take out a loan on our behalf or anything like that. It needs to be a much larger movement than just what we might say. So that's just a little strategic thinking.
Yeah, Ken.
Mr. Chairman, since we're going to run out of your time, a lot of time here pretty soon, would it be appropriate for you all to express your desires and what you've kind of summarized here by way of passing the resolution that was presented to you tonight?
Yeah, we're going to talk about that.
Okay. I, I just saw the clock and knew we were coming up to the time.
Excuse me, we have somebody back here that would like to talk. You're going to need to come up to the microphone.
My name is Linda, ooh, that's loud, Moreland, thirty-seven Mini Haha Avenue. And this is hard. This is hard for me because I've known the Jenkins family for forty-five years. On a different level than some. David Jenkins called me three weeks ago before we had the K R D O interview. And said to me, Linda, I know there's a group that is worrying about what's going to happen with the property. And I want you to know what we're planning. And he told me, which is what we've already discussed. And I said to him at the end, David, I would really appreciate it. We all would. If you would go back to Suzie, his wife, and his family and ask if we would be able to change the donation so that it would be for open space and trails. He didn't answer that. He didn't say yes or no. Then he said, Linda, if we don't do what we're asking, if we don't make the donation to the city and we don't do it that way, that property is worth, and we will use it for development for much more than eighteen million dollars. We are being naive to think that they are going to give us that property. And they're not the only ones involved. Now, I've stated this before, not to, not to this group. We know that Walton's family is involved. Adventures Out West, the owner, is involved. And shoots with the Broadmoor and the cog is involved. The Jenkins are not going to give that property away. We are being naive to even go there. I also was told the same thing the same day by Chris Jenkins, David's son. I asked him again, please go to your family for Manitou, for our community and ask, talk to them about making this a donation to the community for open space and trails without any attachments, just as what that is. Chris did not respond at all. The reason he didn't respond, in my opinion, is because his father makes that, the bottom line decision in that, and his mother. So I appreciate all of you very much. I know you've done a lot for our community. But three hundred and fifty thousand is a joke. And I see you shaking your head. And the city might be able to come up with a couple of million dollars too. But that's not going to buy this property. It's not going to happen. And while I'm here, the last thing I'm going to say is that today I started with the city, the process of recalling Mayor John Graham. Because he has been working behind this community's back for years. We have proof of it. We're going to recall him. Just wanted you to all know that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. There's not much about that I disagree with, except the last part about John. I think we probably, it probably is wishful thinking, but certainly I think we have to approach the Jenkins. And we have to ask the questions and we have to see what they're going to say. Ken?
I, I just wanted to clarify that the Friends of Ruxton Canyon has not taken a position or suggested anything about a recall. So just wanted to be clear, that is not something that this neighborhood organization has talked about. I mean, maybe we would, but that, that's not something coming from the Friends of Ruxton Canyon. Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that you all were clear. I'm, I'm not saying at some point we might not weigh in, but we certainly haven't.
Thank you, Ken. Judy?
I have a question because I, I was a little late due to my computer blowing up.
A little closer to the mic.
A little closer. Okay, so I want to ask a procedural question. Hold on, just one sec, sorry. Missed something. Are we having a discussion about this right now? Okay. Okay, because I wanted to make a motion, but I want to wait then. And I have a one more procedural question. Sorry. So Ken, if somebody wanted to get back to this group, would we contact you?
You could contact me or Kim or Jeff. Yep. Or any of the others out there. Yeah, we, we, we don't have a formal organizational structure, so.
Well, I was just wondering, you know, if we wanted to ask questions or we had an idea, who do we?
Any, any, anyone or all of us.
Okay, thank you.
Is this going to be quick?
I, I want to acknowledge that we're going into this knowing that the chance of success is small. We, we know going into this that the chance of success of a donation of this land is small, but, you know, we have to try. That's why I want to emphasize, we, we feel like there's a crack, right? The door's been opened slightly by them approaching city council. And so that's why we're coming to you is, we know that the, that the likelihood of the donation is, is small. But perhaps if we could get the corridor or a small piece of it, then that, that's a huge win. And so we have to take advantage of this opportunity, knowing, knowing that it's a dream. But if you don't knock on the door, if you don't dream, if you don't start something, you know, take something that to us was very negative to begin with, but make it something positive, then nothing's going to happen. And so we just, we, we want to come to you knowing that we don't expect you next year to be like, hey, we got the land. But we want, we, we just want to ask you to, to also view this as a little opportunity that could possibly lead to the acquisition of this land. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we're pretty much out of time here. Do you have some, one quick?
Yes, I just wanted to verify what Ken said. That statement about recalling the mayor did not come from our group. There are part of our group that are behind it, but it's not the group.
Thank you for clarifying. Look, everybody, it's just been kind of hodgepodge a little bit, but we did, did the best we could and still made sure that we allowed everybody that wanted to talk to talk. So this doesn't say we can't have another meeting with a little bit looser format. So thank you very much. And that'll be the end of community input. All right. Judy, did you have something?
No.
Did you want to make a motion?
Well, I would move, I would move to adopt, oops, here it is. The resolution, a resolution encouraging acquisition of Western Border Parcels for Open Space. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
No.
No.
Has everybody read this?
You can actually put it as submitted by this group. You can just say that, you think. It's actually, just to let you, you folks know, it's been reformatted into the city's resolution format. So it reads exactly the same, but there's a lot of whereas's and whereas's, therefore's sections, blah, blah. So anyway. If that's enough, as written.
Again, what is your motion to do what?
My motion is to approve the resolution encouraging acquisition of Western Border Parcels for Open Space.
And does that include submitting it to city council?
Yeah, it's, yes, it is. It would be.
Okay, do we have a second? Oh, I'm sorry. David?
No, mine's a question. If you want to get a second, go ahead.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll now carry on a little more conversation between all of us and before we move on the motion. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, thank you. Nancy, what I'm trying to understand is your comment. Are you saying that the, the draft resolution, it's included in the packet that all of us have, was redrafted by someone on city staff to comport with some form? Okay, well, I.
It's actually, we would forward it to council. Council would have to take it up as discussion. As you can see at the top, it's council bill number blank, resolution number blank. It's, it goes to them for discussion and, and assignment of a number and they either pass it or not. I mean, this, we can't set ordinance. We can't set law. We can only, it's basically a strong, you know, it's a suggestion to council.
Well, I know, I know I'm the newest member, but the resolution makes no sense as drafted. The way it is drafted, it's a resolution by council. And yet all the verbiage is a recommendation from OSAC. It doesn't make any sense to me. It's, but.
Well, it was a recommendation.
This is the format that the administration thinks is appropriate. Again, I, I can't make sense out of it. What, what I understood the requested motion was from the Ruxton Committee was would OSAC adopt a motion recommending to council that it pursue all options, et cetera, as outlined in the, in the draft resolution. But again, I can't make sense of it as drafted, but I'm the new guy here and so I'll let it, I'll let it fly. But I don't, I don't get it. I don't get it at all.
Yeah, that's good feedback. All I can tell you is that when we had a discussion with city staff, they said, let's put it in this format for council.
Cheryl?
I had the same question about how this was worded. Because it, yeah, it doesn't sound like it, it's parallel. I mean, parallels don't quite fit.
Why don't I read it? So if people, if there's objection.
Nancy, before you read it, could we go to Judith for her comment? Maybe she can shed some light.
That'd be good.
Sorry, Judith. Go ahead.
Oh, no, thank you. I, I'm just so impressed with how prepared and educated this board is. I want to tell you that there are many ways of acquiring land. Not, not limited to, but including eminent domain. So the, the city and the council have a number of strategies that are at their disposal. I'm not saying we would acquire this land by eminent domain, but I, my, my thought is before you, before you vote, think about what your motive is, given the fact that Jenkins has kind of gone radio silent with their plans. Jenkins have a number of options. They can do nothing. They can put the land up for sale. Or they can donate it if they want to. And so there, there are a number of options. They can also initiate a ballot initiative for a road and a parking lot. That would not happen until twenty twenty-five at the, at the earliest. So I want to not have OSAC kneecap itself by just going with this resolution as written. I'm thinking maybe just put a pause on it until we know more of what the Jenkins plan is. Because OSAC have, you have in your purview and in your post plan and in, in your mission to acquire land, you can reach out to people, including the Jenkins, and talk to them about acquiring this land via donation. So I don't, I just want you to think about what your motive is in bringing this to council now. And if you coalesce around a motive, I will absolutely support that. But there are many ways of, of. But there are many ways of, of, of approaching this land acquisition that have not been discussed yet.
I think you've brought up some good points. Why don't we have Nancy read this? And we'll continue our conversation about it.
You know, I can read, I can do that, but I'd like to really think about withdrawing my motion. Because Judy, Judith brought to mind exactly a thought I had before I reluctantly did this, and that is that we should hold our fire until we know what it is, you know, if nothing happens, fine, but if city council decides to do something or nothing, which I don't know, I, that we can force them to do anything, but, but sometimes something like this is much more valuable when city council is closer to taking action, if you understand what I mean. You know, you've got, you know, you don't have everybody on city council willing to go your way, that kind of thing. And then OSAC weighs in and says, and sends something like this. So that's just a thought I've had in the past. But I'll read this. Resolution, a resolution encouraging acquisition of western border parcels for open space. Whereas the Manitou Springs Open Space Advisory Committee, OSAC, is committed to protecting and preserving open space for the benefit of the Manitou Springs community and visitors. Whereas the western border of Manitou Springs presents a unique opportunity to expand the existing open space network and create a contiguous western boundary. Whereas two parcels of land totaling fifty-seven acres might be available for acquisition on the western border. Eight, eighteen acres owned by the Jenkins family, thirty-nine acres owned by the Walton family. Whereas these parcels offer significant ecological value, potential for wildlife habitat protection, and scenic beauty. And whereas public access to these lands for passive, passive recreational activities such as hiking, bird watching, would further enrich the quality of life in Manitou Springs. Now, therefore, be it herby resolved by the city council of the, of the city of Manitou Springs, Colorado, that section one, that the Manitou Springs Open Space Advisory Committee strongly encourages the Manitou Springs City Council to pursue the acquisition of the aforementioned parcels for inclusions in the city's open space network. Section two, that OSAC recommends the city council explore all available funding options for the acquisition of these parcels, including grants, fundraising initiatives, and potential partnerships with land trusts or conservation organizations. Section three, that the OSAC is committed to working with the city council, relevant stakeholders, and the Jenkins and Walton family, families to explore mutually beneficial acquisition options that ensure the long-term conservation of these lands. Section four, that OSAC emphasizes the importance of maintaining existing trail access on these parcels and developing a comprehensive management plan to ensure their long-term sustainability. Adopted at the meeting of city council of the city of Manitou Springs on blank, blank, blank. So that's it. Signed by the mayor and city clerk, which it is not at this point. Those are blank. So it is, I get it. It's, it's a city council resolution, but halfway through it, it becomes an OSAC resolution, an OSAC recommendation. So I think we need some rewording.
Yeah. I, I just want to remind everybody that there's nothing in this that hasn't been written already in the post-plan or in other documents. And there was nothing that's going to, that will keep us from, keep OSAC from attempting to move forward in order to see if there is any crack in the seams with the Jenkins property. So I, I really have to agree with Nancy and Judith that tabling this won't create any, any problem or necessarily any slowdown in what we're doing. So I would like to hear a motion regarding that.
I withdraw my motion at this time.
Do we need another motion saying that we're tabling this? David? Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
I agree that city council is going to be the one who's going to have to make the acquisition. However, we are an advisory committee, so we are advising city council. And I see nothing wrong with us taking a stand on this and advising city council to encourage the acquisition of that property. I don't think we can just sit and wait for Jenkins' next move. I think that's a, that's a, a false avenue, because the Jenkins are going to be aggressive. They were aggressive with that survey. They're aggressive with setting up that meeting on July sixteenth. They want to move forward to develop all that property. I would, wouldn't be surprised if they're going to just buy out the Waltons, because the Waltons aren't developers. The Jenkins are developers. I wouldn't be surprised if they buy out of that property, and next thing you know, they're, they put proposition before the planning commission to go ahead and plot out that property and start developing. And in that latest Pike's Peak Bulletin Timeline article that came out this week, Mr. Jenkins expressed the idea that the best use of that property would be for luxury homes. So if you want luxury homes up there in your backyard, then just sit and wait and see what they're going to do.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Nobody's suggesting, I don't think, that we not confer with city council and city staff on the possibilities of approaching Jenkins sooner rather than later. We don't need this document in order to do that. I'd be, I'd be happy to write a, a letter to city council suggesting that we move, try and move forward on this. Yes?
I'm wondering, you know, ever since I've been on OSAC, I know that the Jenkins property has come up, that we would love to have this property if, if we, you know, donation or whatever. But have we talked to the Waltons? They, this is a, a new group, someone that I've, I've not heard about. Have we gone to them and asked them if they would be interested in a donation or sale?
I will answer that question. We have gone to the Waltons and asked them that question. With a lot of other questions. I mean, it was nothing with an offer, but they're kind of, they're kind of set on, on holding on to their property. They haven't made an offer that I know of, of giving us any of that property. But on the other hand, they seem like genuinely nice people that, that might think about that if we go and approach them. So I'm not, I'm not adding much to the conversation, but they're pretty easy to approach and talk to. Okay, and we'll do that. We'll do that. Nancy, did you want to make a motion? No. We're in a situation here that I don't know anything about. David?
I don't think you need to take any action if you don't choose to. You don't need a motion.
Okay, then in that case, I'm going to ask, yes, Judy?
Okay, one thing is, I don't know if we need to put it on our minutes. If we recognize the group here.
Throw some legs.
I'd really like to. If we need to put on the resolution, so it's specific in our minutes, that we are recognizing this group, and we will have a contact person and keep in contact. Is that something that would be a positive connection? So people aren't saying, well, what are they doing? They're doing nothing. Well, you know, they went on Christmas break, and it's only August. I don't know. But would it be helpful to do that?
I think that's pretty reasonable if we, if we have somebody from this group who would be in contact. Yes, Steve?
Well, I've gone to almost all the meetings, so I'm pretty involved with the group. I wouldn't mind being an advisory or a liaison.
Okay, all right. Well, that's fine by me. I don't think we have to vote on that. I think what we're about to do is table this for now. And nobody is making a motion. Does anybody want to make a motion that we, we send this to city council, or should we table it? Okay, okay. We don't have anything to vote on, so we're done with this, and we're going to go on to the next agenda item.
May, may I just make a comment on tabling something? You, you might want to consider tabling it to either a date certain or, or if and when something happens.
Judith?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
But, but you, but as it, OSAC can still continue in its mission to reach out to the Jenkins and, and, and have discussions, tabling this resolution does not prohibit you from continuing your mission with reaching out to the Jenkins. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thought I did. Thank you, Judy. Okay. Let's carry on with our work here.
Moving on the agenda.
No, we're continuing on with the, okay, we're starting with old business now. The, the first item is Creek Walk, FaceX, Herbin Dean Drive. And the question is, do Judy and Nancy have anything to report on that? Any new information? Judy?
Well, I have a question for Gillian. I have not heard, I don't know if Nancy has, but I don't, I think you would have called me. I haven't heard word one since that presentation.
We don't have any updates right now, Judy. Andrew's still getting his feet under him as far as our, being our new city engineer, so we don't, we haven't had any other project meetings with JR Engineering yet. I think they're analyzing the input from the community meeting when we had the boards and the maps up, and once they analyze that, I, I believe then they'll set the next meeting to move forward with the design.
So is there a timeline on this? A date? An estimated date?
I will look into that and get back to you. I don't have a timeline right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. We'll just move on to the next item, Billbauer Trail Development. And a lot of these are just. Oh, yes. Sorry, thank you very much, Nancy. We, David, do you have something to say about the signage that you've been working on?
Well, I'd had a question and forwarded it to Gillian just about the, I'm going to say the absence of signs or the, the missing signs. Years ago, there were signs that directed you to, but I now call Lower Intiman Trail or Old Intiman Trail, and those are all gone. If you don't know where to leave Oklahoma or Pawnee to get on Lower Intiman, well, if you don't know it, you won't find it, because you think you're trespassing on someone's property. I don't know, but I presume those are easements that the city holds, and I think that's a real resource to, to lose if, just due to the lack of signage. Then down on Creek Walk, where the concrete couch bridge goes between the apartments and the former Young Life Building, there's no sign there either. And you leave El Paso if you know where you're going. But there's just no signage. So my question was, again, being new to the committee, is what is the, is there some protocol for signage? Is there some plan to put signage in place? I don't know. So I just wanted to ask the question.
Sure, I, I wasn't involved in the signage, but I think we have people here that were. And Gillian, what's the procedure here to, to get the signs taken care of?
Nancy, do you want to go first?
Okay. So, so when, and, and there is a section on signage in the, in the, in the post-plan, but when we looked at signage, we decided that our purview was trailhead signage. And we, the, the, the signs you see now on both ends of the Intiman and Red, all those trails or, or trailhead signage is what we did at considerable expense, about fifteen thousand dollars.
And they're, they're just excellent. They're just wonderful.
And, and the, actually, thank you for bringing up that, the part of the old Intiman. There used to be strips there, and they were actually put in, I think, by Friends of the Peak. And they were just a, a metal, brown metal pole with a sticker on it that said Intiman Trail. Are those gone? Okay, so I, it's, those, those would be.
Well, I'll, I'll go look for them again, but.
Yeah. Well, they're not.
Let's just say they're very discreet.
Andrea may have something to say about that, too.
They're very discreet.
David, David, if you have to look that hard, nobody else is going to find them. They're just going to keep on hiking. Yeah, so, so I, I don't, personally, I don't see us doing a big trailhead sign there, but certainly we could have a directional sign and a thing like that. We tried very hard to keep within the city's color scheme and all that on, on those trails. And then our thought was signage down here should be part of the city and parks purview, because we don't really have any open space. We will soon have no open space down here in the, right in the urban area. And signage is, I'm afraid, and this is something, Gillian, we should look at, not part of the budget in several sections of the Creek Walk Trail. And it would, we, we would want to do something there, too, but probably nothing as big as we've done on trailhead signage and, and some of that kind of thing. But I hate to pass the buck, but I think it's more city and, and Parib on those signs, but we should do something about the, the signs on the old Intiman on Oklahoma and that, that piece up there.
I'd be happy to, why don't I take some photographs with some locations and then I'll distribute them for another meeting. I'll do that. Then we can really talk about it in a more informed way.
Yeah, Andrew.
So for years now, that has been a line item, like a project for trail maintenance is to address the smaller signage, kind of directional elements of the trail system. I think if you, like, maybe made up a proposal, you know, like, that we could maybe share with Parib or whoever, you know, I mean, and I think we could consider using some of our funding for that, too, especially for like the Intiman and Lower Intiman trail areas. We have talked about this many times, and, and it's just one of those projects that we need to make happen.
Judith?
I don't know if this is acceptable or offensive, but I, I don't know exactly where we were hiking, but the new trail signs on this hike we took, A, they looked indestructible, B, they looked super simple, and C, they were really clear, because they were four-sided, and they were metal. And then I don't know whether the, the things, the directional things themselves were, were stick, not stickers, decals or what, but those things looked really solid. They looked like if a bear sat on them, nothing was going to happen. And I, I think, yes, they're probably more expensive because they're metal, but there's no maintenance. And I just thought that'd be something, if we're going to talk about signs, we should think about. Take pictures next time, if I remember where I went.
So Judy, I bet you were in, were you somewhere near, oh, this is Gillian. Were you somewhere in Colorado Springs? They just did a new wayfinding package for all of their parks, trails, and open spaces. So the signs you are seeing there, it's an iron post, and then the stickers are graffiti proof and super easy for staff to interchange also, if we have to interchange, or if a trailhead, or if a trail. or if a trail name changes, we can change out the arrows. So it was a very expensive package, but it's awesome. The the wayfinding, I think, has totally changed in Colorado Springs, and it's really easy to to navigate the trails now.
Yeah, I I don't know where it was. I didn't think it was in the Springs at all, but I was just totally impressed because it looked like what you said.
They have those exact same posts on the Utra on the new UTRail.
On the U.
New UTRail.
Maybe that's where we were.
Pointing to the incline uh on the incline Vale Trail. But they've also got them out there on the Intiman Trail on the other side of Crystal Park Road out there going towards Red Rocks Open Space. They've got a lot of them.
Okay, do we have an action item on this, Gillian?
We need better wayfinding on our trail system. So what park staff can do right now is put up temporary wayfinding. Um, there's a lot of broken TELSPAR along Intiman Trail that we could replace fairly easily. But I think if we're going to do an official wayfinding package, that's significant cost and something I'd want to chat more about with the committee.
Okay, uh. So you're gonna bring this back to us next uh next month?
Uh, I can give you an update on wayfinding. We add to the trails temporary wayfinding. That that would be like updating the the TELSPAR sticks that we have along Intiman and replacing the ones that are damaged. I don't I don't think I will have time between now and the next meeting to price out a whole package.
No, I understand. I just don't want it to fall through the cracks.
Okay, yeah, I'll make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so uh it does relate to a something later on our agenda, but um but I was gonna say just um and it's mostly Nancy's updates on the um the post plan, looking at some of those goals, like part of it is to really um develop and define a trail system, which I think, you know, like us revisiting the mapping process of that, which I know that some city staff are working on, that that could be a pretty good uh collaborative project is talking about the signage and then defining the trail system.
Yeah, that would be awesome, Andrea.
Okay, let's move on. The next item is Bill Bauer Trail Development. And I don't think we've got anything but a status update of that. Okay. So let's see, we we had uh Andy and Robin. Andrea, do you have anything to say about that? Yeah, we're on hold until um Mr. Rose uh decides to uh decides to work and do his property, do the development on his property. So that's it for that. Uh, Black Canyon Open Space. And this is kind of interesting because you had a uh a proposal from Kimball Horn in your in your packet. And I was wondering if everybody had a chance to take a look at that and if they had any comments on it.
I would just call the group's attention to page um of this. If you cut down to pages um twenty-one and thirty-one. Especially thirty-one. That's really, you know, the question is, what are we gonna get for our four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, I mean, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars?
Right.
And and the scope of services phase one there is is what we're talking about. And I'll I will tell you the thing I'm most excited about is um under the the five lower bullet points. They plan to mark off the trail um trail access location, trail alignment, um and some of those kinds of things. Which is almost um. You know, it's a different. We talked about doing this in a different way, not having to do a whole park master plan before we actually got some access there on some trails and and these guys say they're gonna do that. So um I think they stopped short at flagging it, but they said they would flag it if we wanted them to. So my thought was just we want to get something flagged so we can get up there and walk through it and um get everybody's in input on it. So um that's what you're looking at tonight, and I guess you do need approval, right?
Yes, yes. I'd like to add that, uh, yeah, it looks, if you just read the uh the verbiage there, it it doesn't look very impressive. They're getting giving us two to three pages and uh and a uh map layout of uh of the possible uh trails in there, but they're they're planning on doing that on in electronic format. This isn't just an eight by ten sheet. If they printed this out, it'd be an E E size uh sheet. And they're going to be going in there and actually, it sounds like they're gonna do a lot of work. We'll find out. I mean, we're risking uh almost five thousand dollars. And as Nancy said, we've discussed the possibilities of a streamlined, I think I like that term, a streamlined master plan, which is specifically aimed at GOCO and other agencies for the purpose of uh getting funding. Uh, it's not going to contain the information that's already in the conservation easement. So I think it makes a lot of sense and I think we should uh vote on it and get this going. So do we have a motion?
Before we do that, can I um just verify from the map that I on the little computer that they are proposing two different trails, right? They have a trailhead, which is more of a walking trail, but there's also a mountain bike trail in it. A a different trail that's mountain bike. So we would be getting their ideas to get two separate type trails in there when we were kind of thinking one.
Hold on, that's that's a mistake, and I've been trying to get him to correct that. Those will be multi-use trails.
Well, but there would still be two trails.
There'll still be two trails, yeah.
Okay.
They'll all be multi-use trail.
Okay, okay, but um, you know, when we were first talking, it was just we were talking one trail, but but they've got two trails in there. So I'm like, oh, you know, and another trail. That's great.
Yeah, I think the other thing that's been difficult is we haven't had a map to even to refer to, you know, to all talk about together. Well, what what's that and what's that? Now, at least we'll have something, a reference point on some of these things. And we may discover when we look at the layout. And I was just reading the trail, some of the trail guidelines in the post today, you know. You don't really want to see one trail from another trail, you know, you want to that isolated experience. So it may be some of the the way it's laid out right now is too close. Um, but we don't know until we we're we're walking it. And um and it's flagged. So, yeah, this will be a good first step, I think.
It's it's good to keep in mind that uh the the legs of that thing are only about twelve hundred feet. So, well, not this one, since we go to the other property, but um, it's not as big of a property as we'd hoped um or as we thought, but uh it feels like it when you're up there hiking it. So I think we can, I think we can do a nice job on that. So can I hear a motion to accept this?
Uh, I will make this is Andrea, a motion to accept the Kinley Horn proposed, uh, what do we want to call it?
They call it the concept document.
Concept document.
This is Rob, and I will I will second.
Okay, do we have any more conversation about this? No, 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 no. Everybody's ready to vote. Uh, everybody voting in favor, please raise your right hand. We have six votes. So the motion passes.
Tim, just to clarify a second. My understanding is if we have six members and we're a seven-member committee, that one of the alternates can vote. And the way that we do that on a couple of other boards is that the two of them alternate meetings.
Okay.
Meeting, one person votes and the next if there's a need for an alternate.
I had thought that we only had to bring an alternate on if we didn't have a quorum.
I'm just telling you how they do it on the match board.
Okay.
They want to have a full. They want all seven. They want seven votes. Tonight, we would have a a tie.
Okay. Quick, who wants to be on?
I guess we ought to look at our bylaws, huh? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, there's an honest man. We'll take him. Okay, all in favor promoting David for tonight as a member? Done, done, done.
It doesn't take.
Doesn't take a vote? Yeah, okay. Um, all right, David, you're now a voting member for tonight. It's not much left of it, so you can handle it. Yeah. Do I have what?
But how did David vote?
Oh. Just raise your right hand. We have seven votes. All right. Yes, I have something uh on the archaeological stuff. The the really, really, the only thing I have on that is that uh I'm going on a hike uh with Mike Mayo and Manny Paluf. Palufa? What's his name? Manny? What's Manny's name? Yeah, I'm asking you.
Polito?
You? Polito, thank you. You know, oh, I thought you did. Yeah. And I had asked uh Steve to go on that, and he can't be here on the fifth and uh.
Actually, Mike Mayo contacted me. We're gonna go on a different day. I'm not sure if that's the same hike you're going on or not, but I'm going on the ninth with Mike Mayo. Of August.
On which day?
The ninth of August.
Okay, no, we're going on the fifth.
Okay.
And uh David is going to join us on that hike. He feels that that uh this is a a different archaeological item than what you saw out there. So it'll be interesting to hear what you have to say, Steve.
Yeah, because he showed me pictures and it's not the same one that I was thinking of.
Okay.
It's more of an cave.
Okay. Yeah, he also says that it's very far down on the bottoms. You know where that's at. So hopefully that Steve leaves plenty of room for the trails without uh having to go through all sorts of jumps and hurdles. We'll see. Okay, thank you for reminding me of that. Next, next is one of our uh reviews of uh. Cheryl, I'm sorry, Cheryl.
Could anyone else join on that hike?
Speak into the microphone?
Could anyone else join on that hike?
What day are we going on the hike?
The fifth.
You can't come.
Yes, I can.
And the the reason is that we would then be breaking the uh the sunshine law. Huh?
Why can't we post it?
Yeah, I'm not sure we want to post it now. There's a there's an archaeological issue with that. We have to get permission to um to take people on that site. I'm not. I'm not exactly sure how that is, but what I was told by uh Beau Schreiber is that we actually have to have, and we're not going to, but we actually have to have permission to go and look at some of those sites if if they're archeologically significant. So for now, anyway, you can't come.
Well, you could maybe come with me and Mike.
You can't either.
It would be just two of us, right? And the sunshine law would be okay.
And you're going on the?
The ninth of August. Friday.
Sorry.
Looking at different, a different side.
Okay.
Same same thing, different day.
Okay, so reviewing sections of the post plan, Nancy.
You have. This is really weird. This really cramps our style. But um, okay, goal nine, both of these goals I got a kick out of when I was looking at them today are apropos with our discussion with the whole group that was here tonight. So goal nine, ensure consistency and compliance with citywide and regional land use planning and conservation efforts. Um, and the actions are one, ensure that open space efforts are consistent with Plan Manitou, Urban Renewal Authority Goals and Policies, Manitou Springs Forward. And that's being revised right now, zoning designations and with this master plan. This is um, there are a few issues in here for us. First of all, the master plan is being redone, and I don't know if any of us, other than answering those weekly questions, if there will be an interview with Osak as part of that planning process, Judy?
I don't think the uh the post is being redone.
No, it's not the post, but this is talking about being in compliance with Plan Manitou. Not the post plan. This is the larger plan. We have a lot of plans. And for example, in the last in the last Plan Manitou or or Manitou Springs Forward, there was a whole section on the natural environment, which is where kind of Osak comes under natural environment for that, for those purposes. So we should probably at some point make sure that Osak. I I don't know if they're gonna divide it up the same way, and there's gonna be a section on nat- natural environment in the new plan or not. Do you know?
I'm not sure, but I will find out. I just jotted that down. So I'll check with our planning department. They're leading the Plan Manitou effort.
Okay.
I would assume so, but I want to double check.
Yeah, yeah. And if there and if there is, we should have some input.
Right.
Seems like. Okay, um, so that's one thing going on there. You know, the other thing that jumped out to me was zoning. For example, right now, we're trying to or we're encouraging Parib to rezone the parcel that we're trying to give to them on Fields Park. And we also found out, we we just went through a big rezoning thing of a lot of our small parcels that are dispersed throughout the city. We've they were zoned all kinds of different ways. And I'm assuming I'm actually not too optimistic since we have a new planning department again. Um, that was underway at a couple of points with different planning directors, and I don't know where it is now.
It is projected to be on a an upcoming council agenda. I'll need to get the date from Fred, our planning director, but he did mention that at a recent meeting. He's gonna be working on open space and parks rezoning. So very positive.
All right, good, good. Um, otherwise, if anybody sees or is aware of any place where we're not in, you know, compliance or we can do better in being um consistent with these plans as outlined in this goal. Speak now.
You know, we've got those, a couple of documents out there on the uh the miscellaneous parcels. I don't know that I don't know that any of those who's owned open space. Um, some maybe, some some might not be, but uh somebody should take a look at that.
Okay, yeah, I have that, Tim. You sent that a while ago, actually. So we'll compare that to what's being presented at council this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then um nine point two, work with regional partners, including Colorado Springs, El Paso County, et cetera. And appropriate foundations and land trust to identify and implement compatible joint venture open space projects. Um, I think that. I think that we just did that with Colorado Springs and purchasing the, the extra property adjacent to the Black Canyon. I have a hard time coming up with any other examples relative to that. There, we certainly have, have partners partnered with the city on things and there probably will be other opportunities when we start talking about Hick and Botham Flats and, and even with the county, since they own Rainbow Falls and all that. Opportunities there, but just something to be aware of. Any other comments? Okay, goal ten, identify essential requirements for and implement management and stewardship plans on open spaceland. This is a big one. Just looking at, at ten, one, commit adequate resources to ongoing noxious weed monitoring and management trail and social trails management and forest health management on open space. We now have a, an arborist who I think is in, kind of in the process of looking at our, at our forests. Does he look at, has he surveyed? I know he surveyed all the property trees, but has he looked at the forest on our open spaces?
No, not at this time. He has been, his directive was city trees. So he's been doing the trees in town, the trees all in Manitou Springs, but not on our conservation easements.
Okay. I, noxious weeds is another one. We've, we've, noxious weeds have been come and gone. I mean, we've spent money on noxious weeds in the past. We decided several years ago, and this could be changed, but that we weren't, we were going to kind of follow the city policy and not use noxious chemicals on any of our open spaces. So we hired Mile High Youth Corps and they pulled weeds for a week for us at one point. We do a noxious weed line item in the budget. But I don't think we've spent any of it for a couple of years. So that's something to be aware of.
I, I have a question about that. I have been on a rampage, just asked Jillian about Canadian thistle. Canadian thistle. Not, not only because it's so invasive and because it kills everything, but also because if you touch it anywhere on your skin, you can, not everybody, but people can get really bad rashes. And it travels underground as well as in seeds. So when I saw it, multiple stalks on a property right opposite the Deer Park, I, that was it. Because I've been pulling up and writing letters to neighbors and doing everything I can to keep it from spreading. And I did not know there was a noxious weed amount in our budget. But I'm wondering, can we move that to the city? Can we give it to the city to fight this? Because I, I, I don't know.
I think it is a city ordinance.
No, I mean, but could we give that budgeted item since we're not anywhere? None of us are going to, I, I mean, other than my nuts, crazy stuff. But could we take that money and say, can we budget this back to the department that's fighting it? So that they could spend more time and money because we were hiking up in Boulder Saturday and in the office of the parks folks, they had a sheet, it was incredibly depressing that they had a two face sheet, top priority A, full and top and priority B, full of noxious weeds that they're fighting. And the problem with noxious weeds is they're noxious and the longer you delay doing it, the more money you spend fighting it. And that's why I was so frantic because there were people in where, where I live who had half of their lawns up front were full of Canadian thistle and they didn't even know it. They just thought it was, you know, whatever. And every person I've contacted in Manitou has helped and, and I told them how to do it and they have pulled them up. And this is, for many of them, this is the second or third year they've been fighting it.
Well, I don't know how we do that.
I don't know. It just seemed like a good idea since we're not going to do it.
Well, the question is, could we hire somebody to do it?
Well, isn't it that if we see an area and, and it comes to our attention that there's an area where there are a lot of obnoxious weeds and we feel as a committee that, yeah, we need to tackle this specific area that, that we have it in our budget to do that. And I'm not sure if some of our trails or open space has a lot of noxious weeds that we are aware of at the moment, rather than, you know, other than the, I, I don't know how you, trail is doing, but.
I haven't seen a lot of noxious weeds, but I wouldn't recognize any except for the, the ones we're talking about here. They're so obvious.
Yeah. And the other thing is just general information. I didn't know this till Saturday either, that I believe it's Home Depot where somebody is selling a gallon combination of bleach, water and light salt. And apparently it kills all these noxious weeds, but not considered a pesticide at all.
I'm, I'm not sure we want to get into that.
But I don't, well, I was just saying that for general information for everybody.
You can pull them. I mean.
Yeah, and we have.
That works.
But I didn't hear what you said, Tim. Yeah.
Okay, a lot of what you're talking about are on parks, spaces and, and private properties.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm not sure what we do about that. Parks should be taking care of that themselves.
Yeah, the noxious weeds are absolutely on our radar and they are in Deer Valley Nature Park. So we are pursuing, we actually have an Eagle Scout who's looking for a project and he might, he might help us out by pulling some weeds in Deer Valley. We also have Team Rubicon coming in at the end of August and they're going to be doing fire mitigation. And if they have extra time, which I think they will with these projects, we're going to have them pulling weeds also. So that's a massive volunteer effort at the end of August.
Yeah, Judy, we've worked with the cooperative extension in the past and they've come out and kind of surveyed weeds and pointed out weeds and they, when we hired Mile Youth Corps, Mile High Youth Corps, they spent a day training them on what weeds to pull and that kind of thing. We've also posted signs about pulling weeds in the past. And we've run into criticism for that. We were told, you know, that we should only be pulling those weeds in the springtime, that to pull them in later in the season, it just spreads the seeds. And then it was a waste of time. So it's really a sticky wicket. You know, we've talked about goats, we've talked about a lot of things, but I'm not sure that we can tackle anything that isn't on open space property.
Right.
Per se.
Okay.
Seek outside funding and partnerships, including volunteer assistance to continue steward, stewardship obligations. And I think we are doing that. RIMFE is doing that. They're bringing in volunteers for us, which is great. Mile High Youth Corps. And, you know, if any, if you wanted to wrangle a group of people to pull noxious weeds, I don't think anybody would object. Volunteers pull noxious weeds, anything like that. Adopt fire mitigation strategies, preserve valuable wildlife habitat and forest health per guidelines provided in the master plan. I don't think we're giving much attention to fire these days. We have spent significant amounts of fire on fire mitigation in the, in the past.
Yep.
I just wanted to mention that in the, in the documents we wrote up about the miscellaneous parcels, there was a comment in there and it's a comment on every one of them that, that we needed to go down in there and, and get rid of the dead wood. And that's all over the city. You have these small parcels that belong to, that are supposedly open space properties and they're just choked with dead wood. And they look like an opportunity for fire to go off. We really, the, the, our, our tree guy should be taking a look at that with a concerned eye. He seems to be pretty conservative about tearing everything out. I had a wrong notion about him. But we really need to get people down there looking at that.
Fast, fast, fast. Is anybody here interested in maybe like taking on a role of like talking with like parks and rec and maybe the fire department about like fire mitigation strategies? I just haven't ever recently, I think, heard of anything like that happening with the city, so.
Wait, talking about them for?
Just reaching out to, to parks and rec and saying, hey, what are we doing here with fire mitigation? And are we talking with the fire department just so we have an understanding of where we're at with fire mitigation in our open spaces?
Oh, I could do that. I like those guys and gals.
Yeah.
Okay, Judy, I will give you.
Unless somebody else, I didn't mean to jump in.
No, I'll make sure you have a copy of that document that OSAC produced, which has directions on how to get to every one of those odd lots.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be fun.
Yeah, just one more point on that. We have worked with this, with the fire department in the past. They wrote the prescription for the fire mitigation that was done along the Intiman Trail several years ago. If Rubicon is going to do fire mitigation, I assume that they're following the instructions of the fire department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the fire department's a partner.
Because they, they'll tell you exactly, you know, what time, what size of stands to leave gamble oak. And, you know, cut down everything with a DBA, you know, greater than or lesser than four inches or whatever it is, an exact prescription for the land that they'll be mitigating. I would like to talk, when you talk to the fire department, if there are specific areas on open space, Judy, that they're aware of, that they think should be mitigated now, we should know about that. Okay. And finally, 10.4, identify culturally significant lands and develop site-specific plans to protect and management those lands using guidelines. So I think one of the examples of that is what's going on in Black Canyon right now with that culturally significant stuff. But if you're aware of other things, any place on our open space or, oh my gosh, if we were to get Jenkins property and that kind of thing, there'd be a whole lot of cultural inventory stuff going on there too. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. That was very good. Very, very clear. Thank you. Existing trail maintenance. Andrea, you want to say anything about Iron Mountain and?
No, I'm just going to defer to Jillian to maybe give us an update that you shared by email earlier. Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely. Just an idea. So I was thinking while we were talking about fire mitigation. We have two arborists that, that take care of the city. If OSAC ever wanted to dedicate funding to fire mitigation on open space property, that would be extremely helpful. I'll say our top priority in town are hazard trees that could present hazards to people walking under them. And that's our number one priority. So the hazard trees in Soda Springs Park, a long creek walk path going through town, those are our top two. So we could always use assistance with additional fire mitigation, especially in our forested areas. So I just wanted to put that plug in there. Also Judith emailed, she had to log off early, so she's no longer in the meeting, just so everyone's aware. Wildcat Gulch, so we had Mile High Youth Corps wrap up on July 12th at the Wildcat Gulch Staircase Replacement Project. They were able to replace the stairs on the eastern side of the gulch and then the stairs at the top of the western side of the gulch. They did have to leave that, I guess that you could consider a very technical section of stairs when you're going up the western side and there's an immediate, like a little platform and then you're going back up. You get it. It's a terrible description though. I'll, I can send pictures. The project was too technical for Mile High Youth Corps. We had a technical supervisor from RIMFE who did 90% of the calculations, figuring out what we needed to cut the timbers into. There were more timbers than meets the eye. So they, every stair you see in Wildcat Gulch is at least three timbers deep. So they were not able to complete the full project. I did get an estimate from RIMFE, the remaining stairs that are in decent condition because of how technical they are and they're, they're pieced in like Tetris blocks. So you have to take them out and put them back in very specifically. That's a four to five week project with a RIMFE crew that's remaining. So I just want OSAC.
Four to five weeks?
Four to five weeks. So I want to just, you know, let you guys know that that, that project is still out there to be completed. The stairs are in decent condition. They are not going to fall down or crumble within the next couple of years. But just to put it on the radar, the remaining project will be about four to five trail crew weeks from an experienced trail crew. Iron Mountain Washout, I'm working on the contract with Traction Trail Works. And we voted, OSAC voted on that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to double check. So I'm working on that and we'll have them start this fall on the Iron Mountain Washout. Red Mountain Cliff Repair, has anyone been up there to go see it?
I did.
What do you think?
I went up there today. It looks pretty good, you know, it's, yeah, it looks pretty good. They put it in a six by six alongside of that area that was getting pretty thin and we'll just have to keep an eye on that six by six.
I agree.
We don't want it rotting out.
Yeah, they, I thought they did a great job of stabilizing that edge.
I thought they did too.
And they added a few stairs going up. It could be worth having them maybe do additional mitigation next year as part of the contract if we wanted to pursue that. But I thought they did a really great job. So they got that done. And that was a big 12 foot timber they carried up there by hand. Took them two days. So kudos to them. But RIMFE is also, has also completed their contract for this year. So we have both of our trail crews finished.
So let me ask you, what about that little area that's washing out that I keep bringing up endlessly? That's just west of the, the, the gulch?
So they, they did tell me why they couldn't get to it and it was because they had to offer so much support to Mile High Youth Corps. There would have been steps left unfinished if RIMFE didn't dedicate more staff to jump in and help with those stairs. So they, they know that that section needs done. I think that could be something we finish this year with the remaining, some of the additional funding in our trail maintenance budget. I think with, maybe we could find someone else to help our own crew, our own parks maintenance division. But I think it's a project we could handle outside of the scope of our RIMFE and Mile High Youth Corps contracts. We, Parks Maintenance. And then we could find additional support, maybe some very experienced volunteers. Maybe someone like Medicine Wheel or other groups that could offer that technical guidance with that. But I think that's a project we can still do this year.
All right, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, you know, I was, I was also up there a couple of days ago and you know, I don't think it's going to wash out right away, but it, it could be a real problem when it does, you know, it's going to be, it's going to get harder and harder to fix. Yeah, David.
I'm just not clear where you are. Are you on Red Mountain?
Yeah, okay. So let's say you're walking up the steps.
Where? I don't know where we are.
Pardon me?
Are we on Iron Mountain, Red Mountain?
Yeah, we're on Iron Mountain.
Iron Mountain.
You're walking from Crystal Park Road towards Iron, the top of Iron Mountain.
Yeah.
You walk across the steps, you walk through the gulch.
Walk in.
And then about maybe a couple of hundred yards west after you, you'll turn.
Do the switchback.
And you'll, the first switchback is a washout.
Okay.
That's starting up there.
Okay, okay.
That threatens to, to be a problem because it's it's not easily fixed. It needs support in order to fix it. Okay. it's not easily fixed. It did need support in order to fix it. Okay.
I, I bet Jillian's right on that. That, that could be done.
Judy? Oh, okay. I, I feel, I feel badly for them too. That's, that's sad. Okay, uh, let's see. Uh, well, we've covered everything, uh, with the Red Mountain, uh, Cliff Repair. That's, that's done and it looks good. So we're on to, uh, Fields Park Creek Walk. And I don't think there's anything to say about that. We haven't, uh, our arborist has not done anything on that because he's been redirected. So.
Yeah, there's a lot to do in town and I've honestly been redirected also to redirect Matthew. So we, we will get to those trees, but there are bigger priorities in town that we, that we have to have him do first.
One of the big parts is getting the fence out of there. But, uh, you want to do the, I think, uh, Matthew wants to take care of the trees first, right?
Yeah, the fence is a great barrier, like a safety barrier between the trail and the hazard trees. So it's just one less barrier we need to put up when we're removing the trees.
Okay. That's it. Go ahead, Judy.
Uh, whenever everybody was here and they were talking, I, I didn't want to ask this question, but do, do we, if we want to talk about money for that project, for the Jenkins project? If, do, does, I don't have a clue as to how you would start, but would it the first place to look for that kind of money be the Palmer Divide Trust?
Yeah, um, I don't, the kind of money that they're talking about. If, if, even if we lower it down to $10 million.
Lower it.
If you amortize that at seven percent for 10 years, it's a million, $430,000 a year roughly.
Oh my gosh.
So we say goodbye to OSAC and probably a lot of other parts of the, uh, city budget. I didn't, I was going to say something about that, but I didn't. I think, uh, most of the people there have a pretty good idea that it is just not feasible for us at that kind of money. I don't know where you go. I, I don't even know if, uh, GOAT Co. has that kind of money.
Maybe we should.
You're shaking your head. No, so.
They do have that kind of money, but very little of that property would work, would meet the criteria. You know, part of it would, but, but not the majority.
Maybe we should tell everybody in Manitou to start buying lottery tickets. I always, we should tell everybody in Manitou to start buying lottery tickets.
Well, they have a lot.
Sign that you're gonna, you're gonna donate it to the project. What?
Has a ton of money, but, but the criteria is very specific. But it'd be worth looking at.
One of the, uh, people, the, one of the, uh, resources we have that we can talk to about that is, uh, Kim Lee Horn. They, uh, keep telling us that there's tons of money out there. So we should test that, uh, test that statement. Okay.
Thank you. I was just wondering if we should have a meeting talking about that or get a list together of people we should be investigating or asking about what their criteria are. If we're going to pursue this at all. Just, just a thought. Sorry.
I think we should be talking to, uh, city council about that.
Okay.
Cause they're the ones that are going to have to foot that bill.
Okay.
We've just, we just can't. We just don't have the money to do that. Um, okay, uh.
Shall I make a motion to adjourn?
I was just going to ask you to do that.
I wanted to say something.
Hold it, yeah.
About, I guess maybe it would go.
End of the mic.
Closer to the mic. Future agenda, maybe. Um, whenever that talk started up this evening about Mayor Graham, that I just totally felt very uncomfortable about that because that was not on our agenda. It was not on their agenda. And so I acknowledge you for a great introduction, Tim. And you for bringing up things that we might need to be talking about in, um, executive session, which wouldn't be that, but, um, I just, I'm just thinking in the future, if we have either ourselves or a guest, a public, brings up something like that, that's not related to what we're here for, that you swelch it. Just say, that's not on our agenda. I'm sorry.
That's not.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's not on.
It's really not our purview.
Yeah.
Anything about the mayor is not what we're here for.
Well, yeah, I was just trying to identify that we have a resource that's already got a, um, that's already got a connection with Jenkins. He's probably the best one.
Your comment was fine. It's just that once you brought up the, uh,
Oh, what?
That petition.
That was just way out of bounds.
No, okay. I thought you were complaining that I brought up John.
That you might just stop it right there and say, oh, that's not on.
Gotcha. I was.
Really?
Yeah.
If it's common on non-agenda item, but.
But it wasn't on the.
Say it during that part of the.
Well, I, I think it was important tonight to let people talk. And I think we did that. Um, so. Let's get out of here.
Okay, so I'm going to, for next agenda, cause you asked me to do some research on bikes and I did it.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um. Yeah, we can do that next time. There it's, Nancy, I had asked Nancy to do some research on, uh, the e-bike.
On trails.
On trails. And she did it and I didn't call on you.
We are dear.
Or adjourn, thank you.